Seven o'clock and we will call the October 19th, 2021, meeting of the Ormond Beach City Commission to Order. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight by our Utilities Manager, Tim Hayrand, and our Airport Manager, Stephen Lickletter. Also, Police Captain Chris Ruse was with us, serving as a greeter this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Attorney Randy Hayes, our Zone 1 Commissioner Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Our Zone 2 Commissioner Troy Kent.
Hey, everybody.
To my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Zone 4 Commissioner Rob Littleton. And down in front, we have Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Manager Joyce Shanahan, and our City Clerk is Susan Dotteris. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and at this time, I would ask that you silence your cellphones. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight, given by Pastor Neil Ganzel Jr. from Coquina Presbyterian Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Word of Scripture and a prayer of invocation. Psalm 1, "Blessed it is the man who does not walk in the counsel of the wicked, nor stand in the way of sinners, nor sit in the seat of mockers." But his delight is in the law of the Lord, and on his law he meditates day and night. Join me as I pray. Father, we thank you for your mercies to the world, for your mercies to every individual in this room, and to this great city's leadership and governance, and the police, and the fire, and the people who take care of the water, and the streets, and the highways, and the sidewalks, all of which wrap up into one of the most beautiful cities in the United States. And we thank you for the privilege of living here, and we thank you for these folks' good governance here at this City Commission. We ask tonight, as I read from Scripture, that this would be a meeting that is filled with good counsel and wisdom, so that the people of this city will be happy and flourish here, knowing that the men and women who lead them and the citizens that surround them are people who seek first the Almighty Creator God of the universe, and seek to live, love, have their existence in His gaze. These things I pray, in the name of my Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience remarks. We will start with Rob Pearson, followed by Debbie Cruck-Forrester, who will be on deck.
Good evening. I'm Rob Pearson, and I've lived in Ormond Beach for 35 years. You also know me as one of your police officers. Among many other duties, I served as an FOP representative for our police officers. I'd like to begin by thanking you for my opportunity to speak this evening, and also to thank you, our City Commission, for the continuous support of your law enforcement officers. Commissioner Selby, you and other former members of the Commission have been so gracious with the establishment of a nonprofit foundation that has provided us with advanced gear and training. The Commission has recognized our extreme need for vehicle improvements with fleet and technology. Chief Godfrey has worked hard to modify policies that allow a take-home vehicle program, and to allow more contemporary dress codes. We thank you for all this, because it has established a baseline in terms of recruitment and retention. Unfortunately, that baseline was reached by our competing agencies well before we arrived, and there's more to be done. With our population approaching 45,000, and with hundreds of thousands of seasonal visitors, staff studies demonstrate that our city is recommended to employ at least 90 officers to effectively maintain proper law enforcement services. As of today, your police department has 11 positions vacant out of only 71 allotted. With five more out on military and medical leave or still in field training, we are 22% down in sworn personnel. While we've always committed ourselves to provide our community with proactive enforcement, we currently have just enough officers to reactively respond to calls for service. Staffing challenges continue to mount, the Sheriff's Department and the Land Police Department are offering pay rates and raises that exceed ours by several dollars an hour. With guaranteed raises and a recently approved contract, Holly Hill PD will outpace our starting salary within the next year. We are already beaten by agencies such as New Smyrna Beach and Daytona in the same regard, with other agencies raising their starting pay soon. Compounding the problem is that our pension plan is by far the least desirable in the area with the lowest multiplier, longer terms of service, and the highest minimum age to draw. These same competing agencies offer 20-year retirements with lower employee contributions, a minimum of 3% multipliers, and no age restriction. Other agencies participate in FRS, which allows, offers similar benefits in addition to portability, none of which offer our pension plan a remote chance to compete. I want to emphasize that this is not a complaint, rather that this is an effort to bring matters to your attention. Those of us who have dedicated our careers here, some of us for 25 years and more, have regarded you, our current City Commission, to be the most supportive of our police department, among whom we have ever served. We want you informed and aware of our situation, and we respectfully request your consideration with pay and pension modifications prior to the next collective bargaining agreement, which will not occur for at least 18 months. We're already behind, and waiting any longer will likely prove to be unsustainable in terms of recruiting and retaining quality personnel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Debbie?
We're supporting you also. I agree with Rob. My name is Debbie Cruck-Forrester, Ormond Strong Commander. You see us every day, walking the bridge, supporting our military veterans, first responders, and those who are deployed. We're here in a support, to raise awareness and support for everybody that serves our great community. We support the Ormond Beach Police Department, who put their lives on the line every day. So, we heard, we're not here to complain. We're here to just raise awareness and support of the issues they're dealing with. Thank you for your leadership. I'm making this very short. And let's all be Ormond Strong.
Thank you, Debbie.
I think we're good.
Next is Janet Ivanhoe.
Hi, my name is Janet Ivanhoe. I own a few properties in Ormond Beach. One of the most infamous one is the Rockin Ranch. And I didn't expect this, but I guess I'm in full support of our police, because I have a major problem on Collins Street, which is right behind the Rockin Ranch, major drug dealers. I did one eviction several months ago, and they retaliated, broke into my warehouse, slashed my tire, pulled off the bumper of one of my vehicles, and pulled off a license plate, I mean, yeah, license plate of one of my employees. So, it's pretty dangerous down there. Today, I evicted the major drug dealer at 556 Collins Street, and he just got out of jail. They actually, they moved into this mobile home without legally, illegally, and he just got out of jail six months ago for drug possession. We need police to, I'm frightened, actually, because they're going to retaliate. The sheriff gave him a notice yesterday, and they have to be out by tomorrow morning. So, it's pretty scary, and I'm frightened, to be honest with you. And we certainly need a lot of police protecting the community. That's my story. And just, I didn't realize I was going to be here supporting the police like this, but it's scary. And Ormond Beach has a nice reputation, and hopefully, the police will help clean it up.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Nope. Thank you.
I had a knee replacement, so that's why I'm hobbling.
Glad you're back around.
I don't drink, by the way.
Next is Don Miller.
Good evening. It's Don Miller. And I was here at your last meeting, and I was speaking about Riverbend and the GAI study that you guys commissioned for $57,000. Well, back when Riverbend was going under, and before it went under, I contacted every one of you by email, and showed you where the FAA regulations and guidelines, 5190, 6B, chapters 20 and 21, said that Riverbend had no problem in continuing its existence. And not only that, I was glad to see that we now are on the same page, because y'all mentioned that you like to see maybe the study have a comeback, and have driving range and nine holes. So, I guess, we all know it wasn't prohibited back then now. But that's too bad, because we could have done something like send out an RFP to somebody to take it over as is, at no cost to the city, seeing that the city got it for free anyway. But that gives me, that brings me to the study that we're doing now. Now, we learned that the city's not going to sell, or doesn't want to sell, holes four through six on the river. And there's really nothing you can do with Riverbend Golf Course and the rest of it, other than put aviation-related businesses there, or say, okay, I agree, the golf course was fine, and now we're going to put bike paths, conservation areas, passive recreation. All those fall in the same FAA 5190 category as Riverbend Golf did, or a golf course does, or farmland does. So then, as a virtual contender for your parks and recreation, our parks and recreation, I was kind of stunned. First of all, there's 44,000 residents approximately in Ormond Beach. 22,000 of those are older than 50. 13,000 are over 65. 10% are disabled, and none of them, I don't think, are BMX riders. So, they're not going to be at Riverbend, and they're not going to be on these bike paths and long paths that the study seemed to promote. But here's some of the things they did promote. Experiment with a beach shuttle service. You know that's not going to work. Conduct a beach study, parking program study, and consider beach parking lots. Pay. You know that's not going to happen. Evaluate opportunities for esports. Okay, and then we go on to gym, doing something in the gymnastics center. Outdoor basketball. Upgrade the fields at Ormond Beach Complex. Experiment with a trolley. None of that has to do with the people that are half of your residents, 50 and older. That doesn't benefit them at all. So, I don't know how this is a statistically valid
Thank you.
study at all. There are only 1,400 people.
Next up is Bill Denny.
Yes, I'm Bill Denny, 1027 North Halifax. I just attended your workshop this evening, and it really brought to focus the complexity of Avalon Park, and the negative impact that it has on our community. So, I was very, one, good to hear all those, the information. Trying to dig, digest it, and see, as someone, one of y'all said, Daytona's getting all the money, and we're getting all the negative trash coming our way, maybe. So, I thought it was just a very, very good step, and I think y'all identified November 9th is an OB/Life type of environment for the public. I wanted to say that I am pleased all the Commissioners kind of stepped up and kind of gave the same attitude I've been having and other citizens I've talked to. So, and I think Commissioner Selby kind of wrapped up the best way to say that this, we have like 2 million square feet of commercial, whatever, shops in our area from Granada, along Granada to the city, and you have half of that, they're going to plop right down in such a concentrated area. Same thing with the number of housing in the whole entire Ormond Beach. I thought that was a good analogy that says, if you do that, it's obvious to anybody who looks at this development knows it's going to have tremendous impact on it. So, I am definitely looking forward to the 9 November citizens engagement, and hopefully, continue to address this issue, because it is going to be a long-term issue, and it is complex. Thank you for y'all's effort.
Norman Lane.
Hi, I'm Norman Lane, 1314 Northside Drive. The runway extension is going to cost a lot of money, and more importantly, it's going to reduce the quality of life for a lot of the people here in Ormond Beach. It's being sold as something that's going to bring a big economic impact, but that has not been substantiated, and it's unlikely. I live in Northbrook, and I hear airplanes constantly overhead, day and night. I don't like it, but that's the way it is. It's, you know, we all have to accept that. But do we want to add to that noise? The run, the extended runway will make it more practical for larger aircraft, including corporate jets. The bulk of the air traffic now is from flight schools flying small airplanes. What will happen when the flight schools decide to offer training for these larger aircraft and corporate jets? There's no, nothing to stop them from doing that. We'll have more flights and louder planes. Do we want more noise? No. Does this activity bring economic benefit to our community? A very tiny bit. We're told that the economic benefit of the extension is from the businesses it will bring, who otherwise wouldn't come here. This is overblown. The current runway is sufficient to handle airplanes that will handle up to nine people. But we don't see many people, many planes of this size utilizing our airport, because there just isn't a need for it. Businesses that might like to utilize our airport for corporate travel might be located in the airport business park, or someday in Ormond Crossing. In fact, we finally have one such business, Security First, and they do business all around the country. Flagler Executive Airport has a runway longer than what is proposed for Ormond Beach. It's, it takes about 16 minutes to drive from Security First to Flagler Airport, which is about 10 minutes less than it would take for them to drive to Ormond Airport. Is the saving of 10 minutes of driving time for a handful of people, we're spending millions of dollars, heavily impacting the people who live at the end of the extension, and adding more noise to tens of thousands of Ormond citizens? I don't think so. The real economic benefit of places like Security First is the people that they employ, who will work and live and pay taxes in Ormond Beach. It's not the little bit of gas they're going to buy at our gas, at our airport. This extension has big costs for the people of Ormond Beach, and it primarily, and its primary benefit is a little bit of convenience for a few people who have perfectly acceptable alternatives. I hope that you will see the wisdom of prior commissions, and just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And last but not least, Nancy Lohman.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Lohman. Among other things, I'm the President of the Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune Statuary Fund, and I'm joined by Jim Cameron. He and I have served on the board since the formation of our board in 2018. In 2016, Governor Rick Scott signed into law the replacement of a statue in Statuary Hall. Every state in the nation has two statues that represent each state. And in 2000, they passed a law that allowed states to replace statues if they so desired. So, we have the opportunity to go through a process in the great state of Florida to replace our statues if we had wanted to, and we chose to. We chose to replace one statue, went through the process, and decided that that replacement statue would be Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune. So, it's unprecedented and historical that we're living through this moment in time, where for the next 100-plus years, the statue in the U.S. Capitol that represents the state of Florida, one of the two will be our hometown resident and trailblazer in civil rights and social justice, Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune. And so, I'm here this evening, first of all, to invite everyone to come see the statue, because the silver lining with COVID was that we had a series of delays, which allowed our board to think outside the box, raise the money, and bring the statue to Daytona Beach. So, the statue is standing at the News Journal Center, and we invite everyone free of charge to see this glorious statue that was created by Nilda Colmas, and she is the first Hispanic sculptor to be chosen to sculpt a statue within the U.S. Capitol's National Statuary Hall State Collection. Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune will be the first African-American, male or female, in the Statuary Hall National State Collection. She is the only statue that's in a cap and gown that reflects her zeal for education and her thirst to educate young children. She will be the only statue, of course, from our hometown area. And so, I am here this evening to share that with everyone. I want to provide that opportunity, and thank Dwight, and Mayor Partington, and Susan, and Carl Persis for your personal support, financially and otherwise. I want to thank Carl Persis for making sure that all the 8th graders in all of Volusia County come to see the statue and receive that educational opportunity. And if there's a way in which you want to support the bronze statue that we'll be installing in Riverfront Esplanade Park, we invite you to do that. We'll be bringing a commissioned statue, also created as an original from Nilda Colmas. It'll be erected on February 22nd, 2022. The base we're raising money for, we need about $52,000 more dollars, and every participant, $1,000 or greater, will be, their name will be engraved. And so, I invite you, as the city of Ormond Beach, and my hometown, to be a part of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And just to discuss that a little bit further, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Persis.
Well, I'm just proud to say that I have watched Nancy Lohman for four years work on this, this project, and it's finally coming to fruition. And I can't think of a better way for the city of Ormond Beach to show how we care about Mary McLeod-Bethune, and what she generated for our community in Volusia County. You see a picture of this bronze statue, that that's the one that will be going in Daytona, and it's absolutely gorgeous and spectacular, and original by the artist. And I would just like to ask the Commission if you would agree with me, and, and let's vote on, or talk about giving some money for this statue. And I'm thinking $20,000, $22,000, $23,000, I'd like for the city of Ormond Beach to donate.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Commissioner Selby.
Well, I think this is, the entire project, the fact that we have, that we had Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune as part of our community. I went to the unveiling ceremony, and learned an awful lot about her life and her dedication. And what I came away with was that, that her heart was always pure. Her motives were always pure, and she always wanted the best for all people, but especially the African-American race. And, and I think it is, it's really, it's almost difficult to grasp what an honor, and what a, what an honor it is to have Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune, who spent the vast majority of her adult life educating people in Daytona Beach. She wasn't from Daytona Beach, she was from South Carolina. And I frankly don't know how she ended up in Daytona Beach, to be honest with you. That part was probably shared, but I missed it. And that she is now going to, her statue is now going to permanently reside in the, in the Capitol. So, I'm definitely in support. I, I don't know the dollar amount. I will also, I'm pledging right now to make a contribute, a personal contribution to the, to the money you asked for. I don't know, I didn't know exactly what it was, but yes, the answer's yes. Thank you.
That's awesome. I think by way of Palaca, she ended up in Daytona Beach, and this was the perfect place for her to start, to start her school. She's also, I learned, as did we all, that she's responsible, or maybe you already knew, for Daytona State College, being in Daytona Beach. And I believe she had some involvement in starting the Pace School here in Ormond Beach in Zone 2. And so, she's a critically important person to the residents of Ormond Beach. An amazing life, an amazing legacy, and she has, if you've not read her Last Will and Testament, you should read that. It's just an impressive statement on the way to live. And it didn't matter what race you were, she just thought this is how human beings should behave and treat each other. It's two or three pages, too lengthy to read here, but it really is worth, worth the time. I also think it's important that we contribute, because we want to support our sister city, Daytona Beach. We talked in the last workshop earlier this evening about building relationships. And, you know, we have a good relationship with Daytona Beach, but if Ormond Beach is a leader, and makes a contribution here, I think other cities around the area will see that, and likely contribute as well. So, it gives us an opportunity to build that relationship, to be a leader. And, and the way I look at it, you know, if we did, I don't know the amount, but it's pennies on the dollar, as far as what each Ormond resident would pay to go see, to go see the statue, which is here, I think, until December 12th. So, the amount Susan mentioned, I think, would be like 40 cents a person, if you divided it out among our, our residents, men, women, and children. So, a tremendous value. And then, I think that's really, really all the reasons that I would support it. And I think, Joyce, there was, not only the base, you know, dollars needed, I think 52,000, Nancy said, to, to build the base, but if there are dollars remaining, what would those go for?
So, if there were any dollars remaining, they would go, all the dollars being fundraised are for the statue, the base, and a documentary video for children K through 12, that will accompany the bronze statue that you see there. And then, the remaining funds would be utilized for scholarships at BCU. Now, they are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and they follow all the generally accepted accounting principles and rules. So, their accounting overseer, if you will, is Oliverian Associates. You know Mr. Oliveri, he serves on our pension board. So, they, they do have a documented way for fiscal responsibility. I know that was a concern previously.
So, anyone else? Commissioner?
I just want to add one thing.
Deputy Mayor.
I just want to add one thing. I just want to let everyone to know that Nancy and Lowell are the ones who have funded all the 8th grade students to visit the Mary McLeod-Bethune statue, this, on a field trip, you know, this, the next couple of months. So, every single 8th grader in Volusia County Schools will see her, see that beautiful statue. So, I just think we all just need to, you know, give them, you know, kudos for that, because that's amazing, amazing. And my husband Carl's sitting there, he helped arrange it with the school board. So, we have so many people in our community that have really worked hard on this endeavor. So, I just want to thank all of you very much.
Great points. And I meant to say, I love the idea of the K-12 historical video that our school system can use. That's where I learned about Mary McLeod-Bethune, growing up in Volusia County Schools, and an amazing history that she has. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. I'm certainly for giving contribution, and I know with the Lohmans and Jim Cameron's leadership, I totally trust where the money's going. I would offer that the leadership of the 501(c)(3), talk to city staff, and see what they need, and we can come up with a dollar amount.
Well, the amount I think that they need is 52,000. I don't think anybody had, had that in mind, but did you want to speak?
Sure, I'd love to speak.
Awesome.
I'm a big fan of Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune, so much so that Troy and Heather Kent will send a personal check tomorrow. Yeah. But here's where I'm going to differ from my local, other local elected officials up here. We got the police asking for more money. And my thing is, is it my role to take taxpayer money and give it away to what we think, because people we know in the community, and I heard the comment, you know, I know this person, this person, I trust, they'll do the right thing with it. Well, of course they're going to do the right thing with it. But is it our role as elected officials to take your elected officials to take your money? And you can arguably say, it's our money too, because we all pay taxes. We live in the city of Ormond Beach, and we pay taxes as well. But it's not me writing a check for $20,000. It's easy to do that, I think, when it's not coming out of my personal account. I started with, I'm a huge fan of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. I'm so happy that this statue is going into our Capitol. I am so happy for Daytona Beach because they should have the bronze statue in their city. And will other cities jump on board? I don't know. I'm not sure. I saw Daytona Beach gave $25,000, but I didn't see another city's name that gave money. I believe in it so much, I'm going to repeat myself, Troy and Heather Kent will write a check tomorrow. Heather, you don't even know it, but if you're listening online, we're writing a check tomorrow to support this endeavor. I just don't think it's my job to take your tax dollars and give it to a nonprofit, if that makes sense to you.
Thank you. Yep, good points. And I think another point is that Rockefeller, who really was one of Ormond Beach's great residents in the past, was a huge supporter of Mary McLeod Bethune at the time. So Ormond Beach has a, a history of supporting this. Joyce just needs direction on this. It's all of the amounts under $25,000 are within her spending authority. So if there's a motion with an amount, we can try it and see if it works, and if not, that's fine too.
I move to donate $20,000 to the, to the fund for Mary McLeod Bethune from Ormond, the city of Ormond Beach.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, if you would, any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And with that, you have a donation from Ormond Beach. So congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. And we will move to the approval of minutes. This is 5A on your agenda. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting of October 5th, 2021. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, just need a motion.
I move approval of the minutes from October 5th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda action proposed is stated for each item on the agenda. Unless the commissioner removes an item from the agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, item J.
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda minus item J.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded, absent item J, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 6J.
Resolution number 2021-171, a resolution accepting a bid from Univar Solutions USA, Inc., for the provision of hydrofluosilic acid to be added at the water treatment facility under bid number 2021-25, authorizing the approval of a purchase authorization and payment therefore, rejecting all other bids and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-171, read by title only.
Great, thank you. And I don't have any cards on this item. This, this amount is well within the city manager's spending authority, but she knows there are at least one commissioner, sometimes more, that like to speak on this item. So she puts it on here so we can pull it and talk about it. Commissioner Kent?
Yes. So for those of you that have paid attention to this issue for any amount of time, you know, I'm completely against hydrofluosilic acid fluoride in our water system. Should it be in the water system? That's a great, great question, debate we all could have. Should it be in our toothpaste? Possibly. They say that the amounts are okay, you know, for the, for the amount of water you drink, but if you don't drink eight glasses of water a day, what if you drink 16 glasses of water a day? There's a lot of unknowns. Years ago, I wrote a letter to every company in North America that sold hydrofluosilic acid, AKA fluoride, into water systems, asked them some very basic questions, and it was crickets. Not one of them responded. Ms. Shanahan, it's, it's, it's a great thing. You always put this on here so we can discuss this. Thank you very much, because I, I will be a, a no vote on adding, buying the fluoride so it can be added into the water system.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just need a motion and a second on 6J.
I'll move item 6J.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Are there any commissioners who wish to speak or comment on any of the agenda items, consent agenda items? If not, we will move to 7A, and I will open the public hearings.
Ordinance number 2021-35, an ordinance amending section 1-22, definitions of terms and words of Article III, definitions and acronyms of Chapter One, general administration amending section 2-29(b)(8), commercial zoning district of Article II, district and general regulations of Chapter Two, district and general regulations and amending section 2-57, criteria for review of specific conditional and special exceptions of Article Four, conditional and special exception regulations of Chapter Two, district and general regulations amending definitions and providing criteria to allow virtual golf centers, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-35, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards, just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-36.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. I believe it comes with a unanimous planning board recommendation. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 7B.
Ordinance number 2021-37, an ordinance amending section 22-136, minimum water rates and 22-137, minimum wastewater rates of Chapter 22, water and sewers of the city of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, by increasing the minimum water and sewer rates for the Hunters Ridge Flagler County DRI service area, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-37, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask our finance director, Kelly McGuire, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to increase the rates for, the wholesale rate for Flagler County, consistent with the rate increase. You already provided the general rate increase in September. So I apologize, it was an oversight on my part. I should have brought this with the September ordinance. We're just trying to clean that up.
Perfect.
Okay.
I don't have any cards, just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-37.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and move to 8A. Do we go to you for that, Joyce? It's Pictona.
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. The city of Holly Hill reached out to me to solicit a letter of support for Pictona, Daytona, Holly Hill. They're expanding that facility and would like our assistance in supporting that for their ECHO grant. We don't have an ECHO grant in this cycle, and we don't have a competing Pictona facility. So, so we've drafted a, a letter of support for your consideration and a mayor's signature.
Anyone have an issue with helping out our sister city with their?
No.
No question. Great.
Thank you.
You want to vote on it, or you just, you're just verbal?
I just received the consensus of the, the commission.
Perfect. It sounds unanimous, and we'll move to reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, all of you, for your participation today in the, in the workshop, and that's a step towards our preparation for the OB-LIFE meetings. Transportation are key issues for our community, and we take those seriously, and we are working toward that. So building partnerships is key in that role, but also knowing what you want and what you need. And our city clearly knows what we need and, and want, and we are working towards those goals. I just want to update you on some, I've given you my report of the city manager, and I think you approved that on the consent agenda. Is that this time or last time? Last time. So I do that once a month, so you, you already saw that. But I wanted to bring particular note of upcoming events so that you can put them on your calendar. October 23rd, Halloween Highway Trunk or Treat at the Ormond Beach Sports Complex. I just want you to know that the traffic pattern is very congested, so unless you can be there for the entire time from 5:30 to 8:30, it would be very difficult to get you out. So once you're there, you got to be there for the duration. So I just wanted to, I know several of you have indicated your desire to attend, but logistically it would be difficult to extract you to get to your next assignment or next appointment. So I just wanted you to know that. On November 4th at 5:30, the Historical Society is going to be doing an opening of the Union Church Time Capsule. On November 6th, one of our favorite events, Hometown Heroes Ceremony. That's going to be held at the Performing Arts Center. It's held on a Saturday. It's at 10:00 a.m. Halifax Health has sponsored our Hometown Heroes for three years, and they've re-upped for another three years. As part of their sponsorship, not only does it include the banners and all the artwork, but it also includes a presentation to each veteran of their own little banner. And so they have a speaking, they usually have a, a special guest veteran speaker, not last year because we didn't have that because of the COVID, but the year before that, one of their emergency room doctors gave a compelling account of his service in the military and his work here. So that's on November 4th at 5:30. You don't have to RSVP, but we'd like to know if you're coming so we can make sure that we have seats for everybody. And then on November 9th is, that's a Tuesday, I think, the Veterans Day luncheon. We would have normally held that this year, but at the senior center, the, they're doing the infusion center, so we didn't have access to that. So we're going to do another drive-through Veterans Luncheon. It was so well-received last year, so if you can be there to hand out lunches, we would certainly appreciate it. They just loved it. So we're going to do that again this year, and that's November 9th from 12 to 2. And one note more of exciting news is that the Home for the Holidays Parade is back on. So that's going to be on December 11th. There's the same schedule as always. There's a 5:30 reception at, at City Hall for all of those that are participating, a 6:00 p.m. tree lighting, a 6:05 parade lineup, and a 6:30, the parade begins. And you know that every parade has to start on time.
Yes.
We don't like late parades. And one other item of particular note is October 30th, a Saturday, 10:00 a.m. ribbon cutting for the Rick Bone Girls Softball Field. That's out of the sports complex, and the parking is next to the field. We send this all out in your upcoming events, but I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me tonight.
Any questions for Joyce?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, just one last thing. I do want to do a special shout out to, I don't want to steal your thunder, oh, I'm going to steal your thunder.
No, I don't know which. Well, you can, you can come back.
Assistant city manager, Claire Wood.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to our leisure services department. The Halloween Highway that's coming up this weekend and the crazy amount of traffic is just because they do such an amazing job, and they have, you know, with, with providing these alternate events during the pandemic, I mean, they're such a hit. It's amazing. And I know they're eager to get back to normal, but now they're doing some alternate events and the normal event, so they're, they're just doing double the work. And they're just, I mean, every time, they just hit it out of the park, so. Oh, and then also police and fire. Joyce was going to just give a, we both wanted to say thank you. They did such a good job during Biketoberfest. They do every year, but it was just so smooth and always do a great job. Oh, yes. No bike washes.
Great.
We were, kept our eye on that. So thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. City attorney, Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
All right. Really briefly, I'll just say, this is absolutely, hands down, the best city anywhere around. And my, my last final comment is, and, and I don't have to have an, an answer, Commissioner Selby, but I got to tell you, man, I am sitting here scratching my head going, how does an elected official not vote for the tax rate? But you will spend money, $20,000, that you didn't vote for? That's not in our budget? How, I mean, to me, if, if that's not having your cake and eating it too, I don't know what is. And I was just sitting here, and it was rolling in my head going, how do you do that? Everybody else voted for the tax rate, the same rate, but, and I wasn't going to bring it up, so keep my mouth shut about it, not say anything, and just go on with the year. But when we're vote, voting for money outside that we don't have budgeted, I just, I, I don't, I don't understand that one. I'll scratch my head all night on that. Good night, Ormond Beach.
And Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to let everyone know that we had the state of the city last week at Ormond, at, excuse me, Oceanside Country Club. It was a fabulous event. It was just wonderful, and I think our video about the city was fabulous. I have heard so many great comments about it. So I just want to thank staff and thank everyone who put that together. It was just really a wonderful, a wonderful presentation about our beautiful city. Last night, we had an Ormond Main Street gathering at Club 31. It was, it was really nice. It was outside, and the weather was, you know, just absolutely delightful. We sat outside and chatted and, and had a really nice time. And I just want to thank Ormond Main Street for doing that, having that meeting there. And I'm looking forward to the trunk or treat on Saturday at the Ormond Beach Sports Complex, and I hope everyone has a safe Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the state of the city was wonderful. Thank you to city staff and Oceanside Country Club. I actually had General Aldino, who works for Congressman Walts, thank me at an event later that day, and said how good of a job we did putting that on. So it's definitely appreciated outside of our borders. And finally, I'll say thank you to Mr. Pearson for speaking and providing me information, and I appreciate any information I get from our workers, and hope to work with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Commissioner Kent, thank you for your comments. We have more than enough money in the reserves to pay for the $20,000, and that's what those reserves are for. We also have extra reserves of well over $1 million that was approved in the budget that you voted for. So there's plenty of money there, Commissioner, to take care of this most worthwhile project. Beyond that, I really don't have any other comments this evening, but the state of the city was fantastic. Looking forward to the other upcoming events and the OB-LIFE events. We need to make sure that the city, the citizens of Ormond Beach get to see what the impact of Avalon Daytona will be on the city of Ormond Beach. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll start with the state of the city. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll start with the State of the City. It was incredibly well-done. Staff puts a ton of work into that, Joyce and all her staff. So thank you for making us look good, because that's, that's what you do. Dave Pisa did an amazing job with the video this year, and it was just great to be back in person again. I know we met socially distanced with a smaller number of people last year, but this year was a packed house and a ton of positive comments from folks. And I received a, a card in the mail thanking the commission for, for the recognition that they received and for putting on the event, how well-done it was. So I'll give that to Susan and ask her to share that with everybody. But just incredible. We have incredible residents and businesses in Ormond Beach who were lucky, care about us, and contribute, and just do amazing things to make our city as great as it is. So to highlight that at such a beautiful venue with probably the best food I think we've ever, ever had was just a wonderful thing. So thank you for that, staff. And last night, Main Street had their annual meeting and installation of officers. Commissioner Selby represents us on that Main Street board, and that was at 31, kind of just a cocktail hour and an opportunity for them to, to conduct their business that they do on an annual basis. Again, talking about great Ormond Beach residents, who by and large, they're all volunteers, including you, Commissioner Selby, that spend their time working hard to make our downtown better. What's awesome about the Main Street organization is you don't have to own a business. You don't even have to live in the city. If you're interested in our downtown, you can be part of the Main Street organization. I think that's wonderful. They've been, they had a listing, I should have brought it with me, of all the things that they've accomplished since, I don't know, 1995. It's just mind-boggling, the amount of work that they've put in. So wanted to mention that. The Mary McLeod Bethune statue unveiling was an incredible event, and just huge number of people from all over Volusia County, then state and federal leaders as well. But really, I think I mentioned this at the State of the City, Congressman Walz's comments blew me away. It was a story that I hadn't heard about the first black doctor to graduate from the University of Florida Medical School. As a child, had listened to Mary McLeod Bethune in school tell a story about how she witnessed a black man being lynched in South Carolina out of the back of her dad's horse-drawn wagon. And rather than turn to hatred and, and vitriol, which would have been such an easy thing to do, watching something like that, she developed a desire to see racial harmony and to see people succeed based on their abilities. And, and when you read her last will and testament, which I hope you will, I'll just read you her legacy, the, kind of the bullet points. And then she goes on to explain each one, but she says, "I leave you love. I leave you hope. I leave you the challenge of developing confidence in one another. I leave you a thirst for education. I leave you a respect for the uses of power. I leave you faith. I leave you racial dignity. I leave you a desire to live harmoniously with your fellow man. And I leave you, finally, a responsibility to our young people." So just an incredible legacy. If you get the opportunity to watch the video of that statue unveiling, it's, I think, statuaryfund.com. You can pull up that video and watch it. It's well worth your time. That was just one of the stories, and there were a lot of, a lot of great stories. The OB-LIFE Westward Focus Series. Joyce, I hope it may be too late for the water bills. Awesome. Love to see these in the water bills. Love to see full page in the News Journal and the Ormond Observer. I really want a push for our residents to know about this, to be able to be there and understand exactly the challenges that we face. It's extremely important that we get the community engaged. They, I think our community knows in generalities, but now that we have a lot of specifics and are ready to share those with them, it's important that they hear that information. I look forward to seeing whoever can make it to the Halloween Highway. That was a great event last year. Incredibly well-attended. That was kind of more in the heart of the pandemic. I look forward to, we just funded this year, I think, almost eight hundred thousand dollars for the completion of Doug Thomas Way out there at the sports complex. And so in a couple of years, when that's done, the traffic problems won't be as bad, because we'll have a better overall traffic pattern. So that's an improvement that's coming out there. And then finally, I'll, I'll talk about our police, who we are also proud of. They do an almost impossible job at times incredibly well. They have a great leader in Chief Godfrey, who has a cool hand, a steady hand at the helm of that department. They've had a great week. I don't know if you saw in the paper, but maybe it was online. Lowe's donated a grill and some other equipment to them for their department, which is a wonderful gift, great community support from one of our businesses. Also, with the sadness of losing K-9 Kane, comes a positive opportunity in that Ormond Beach was one of, I don't know how many cities selected, but a few cities who had the opportunity to win a twenty-five thousand dollar grant towards the purchase of a new K-9 officer. And so now there's an online vote for that, whether you're on Twitter or you're on Facebook. You can click on that link and vote for Ormond Beach every 24 hours up until October 26th, I think it is. So please go to those places and make those votes. We would love to, love to have that opportunity. And Commissioner Littleton, just like you said, I'm always happy to hear from our police, our fire, our Public Works. They're all integral parts of our city. We collective bargain with them through a process that sometimes can be a little clunky, but it's, it's worked well through the years. And so I'm happy to, to get that information and review it. And so that's pretty much, I think I've covered everything. With that, at 7:57, we will be adjourned. Good night. I voted today.